It's a pleasure to welcome you to this hearing conducted by the Federal Electoral Founders Commission for the province of Ontario. My name is George Vellum, I am the Chair of the Commission. I sit as a judge of the Ontario Superior Court of Justice in North Bay. At this time, I would like to introduce my two colleagues on the Commission. On my left is Mr. Douglas Colburn, who is Deputy Chair. Mr. Colburn has vast experience in provincial and municipal issues, having served as a Member and Chair of the Ontario Municipal Board for several years, and more recently as a mediator and arbitrator of land use planning, expropriation, and election issues. On my right is Dr. Leslie A. Powell, Chancellor's Professor of Public Policy and Administration at Carleton University. Dr. Powell is the author and editor of over twenty-five books focused on Canadian and international politics. Representation by population is a key principle of Canada's electoral system. That is why every ten years after the census is conducted, the number of electoral districts and their boundaries are revised to reflect population shifts and growth. The 2011 census revealed that Ontario's population has increased from eleven point four one to twelve point eight five million people. The number of seats in the House of Commons given to each province and territory is recalculated based on new population numbers and a formula in the Constitution. Last fall, Parliament determined there will be three hundred thirty-eight seats in the House of Commons, one hundred twenty-one of which have been allocated to Ontario. That is an increase of fifteen seats for this province. The process we are engaged in is called electoral redistribution. Your electoral district may change once redistribution is completed. Ten independent electoral boundaries commissions, one for each province, are responsible for readjusting the boundaries of electoral districts and giving them names. Each commission has a Chair appointed by the Chief Justice of the province, and two other Members appointed by the Speaker of the House of Commons. Your presence here today indicates your awareness that this Commission has drafted and published in newspapers and on its website a proposal for the boundaries of one hundred and twenty-one electoral districts in Ontario. Contrary to some opinions expressed in the media, the boundaries we have proposed were not selected arbitrarily or without considerable research and reflection. Our main goal was to set boundaries so that each electoral district contains roughly the same number of people based on current population and the number of electoral districts. The desired population for each electoral district in Ontario is one hundred six thousand two hundred and thirteen. For reasons that we hope are patently obvious, that goal is not realistically achieved. We also took into account communities of interest or identity and an electoral district's history. Wherever possible, we endeavored to respect the integrity of municipal boundaries. Finally, we gave consideration to ensuring a manageable geographic size for electoral districts in sparsely populated regions of the province. At this stage of the process, our proposal is simply what it claims to be. It is a proposal. It is not etched in stone. The Commission has undertaken six weeks of hearings across the province to afford the public an opportunity to participate in the process of redrawing the electoral map in Ontario. This is your opportunity to tell us your opinions about our proposal. When expressing your views, we invite you to keep the following matters in mind: The population in Ontario has increased by one point four four million people since the last adjustment of electoral boundaries. Parliament has determined that an additional fifteen electoral districts should be allocated to Ontario. It is impossible to consider any one electoral district in isolation from the others immediately surrounding it. Any change to one boundary has an inherent effect on at least one adjoining electoral district, and often more. We know that some of our proposals will be the subject of criticism and objection. That is fair game. But if you choose to criticize or object, please offer to us your suggestions as to how we might draw the boundaries better than we have done. When making your submissions, if you read from written material which you have not previously filed with us, please file that material with the Commission's Secretary at the back of the room before leaving. And one final point: The decisions we make will be based on substance and merit. Numerous submissions on the same point will not increase the weight of the point being made. That having been said, if someone else has made a point or points you had intended to make in your submissions, please do your best not to repeat what has already been said. Rather, we encourage you to address matters that have not been raised in previous submissions. Following the six weeks of public hearings, the Commission will consider the views of the public. We anticipate that we will receive helpful advice from the public. Indeed, we are counting on that. There is little doubt in our minds that we will make changes to our draft proposal. We will then submit a report of the proposed electoral map for Ontario to the House of Commons. A committee of the House of Commons will study the proposed map in light of comments it receives from Members of Parliament. The results of their deliberations along with the comments will then be provided to the Commission. The Commission will then review the comments and decide whether to make any further changes to the report. We will then submit a final report to the Chief Electoral Officer of Canada describing the federal electoral map for Ontario. The Chief Electoral Officer will prepare a document called a "representation order" which allows the new electoral map of Canada to be implemented. This new map will be used at the first general election called in the seven months after the representation order becomes official. Now, just three items of housekeeping before we get underway. First, please be kind to your neighbors. If you have a mobile device with you, please turn it off. If you feel the need to engage in texting, please leave the room to do so. Second, given the number of people who have indicated they wish to make submissions to the Commission today, we have determined to limit the length of submissions to ten minutes. Finally, these proceedings are being transcribed and recorded by a court reporter. Everything said here will be taken down and typed up in a written transcript. And so, we invite those who make submissions to speak loudly, clearly, and slowly. And if you fail to do that, we may have to interrupt you to encourage you to do so. In conclusion then, we wish to emphasize that the Commission considers the public hearing stage of the process to be absolutely vital to the success of its work. We wish to thank each of the presenters today in advance for their attendance, participation, and assistance. The first speaker is Warden Gil Brockanier.
I had you call worse, Mr. Christian. I just pronounced Brockanier.
Brockanier.
Now, if I may, I have three hard copies, but may I be...
Yes.
Good afternoon, Commission Members, and thank you very much for providing me... Sorry.
Is that on?
I don't know.
Just on the side.
If it isn't on...
It's on the left hand, so by your left answer.
Is that on now?
Yes.
It's so small that I hardly see it. I'm going to turn it on. Anyway. So, good afternoon, Members of the Commission, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Warden Gil Brockanier, Warden of Northumberland County. Northumberland County is comprised of seven municipalities and seven council members for the county. I'm here today as a motion of Northumberland County Council, unanimous motion, to ask me to come and represent all the Mayors of Northumberland County. And I have with me today, I have some of the other Mayors of the county. We have Mayor Hector McMillan, who represents the north end of the county. We have Mayor Mark Wallace, who represents the east end of the county. We have Mark Croons from Crammy, who represents the central part of the county. And then, of course, myself, I'm representing the west end of Northumberland County. So, we understand one of the goals of the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission is to ensure that populations in any given electoral district number approximately one hundred and six thousand. Currently, Northumberland County is part of the Northumberland Quinny West riding. Northumberland County has a population of eighty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-six, and Quinny West has a population of forty-three thousand and eighty-six. The total population of the current riding, therefore, is one hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and twelve. The proposed boundary changes would impact Northumberland significantly. The proposals would create two electoral districts effectively splitting the county in two parts, which would result in Northumberland County being represented by two MPs and two MPPs. More significantly, it would eliminate the name of Northumberland from any representation in either the House of Commons or Queen's Park. This absence of any name recognition creates considerable challenges in attempting to brand our jurisdiction. We have invested considerable resources and time to create a Northumberland brand, and it is such a critical issue that it must remain. Now, the first of the two electoral districts that are proposed that actually impact us is the Coortle Lakes Porco Coburn, which has a proposed population of one hundred and nine thousand one hundred and ten. And although I'm not going to read all the details of the boundary lines, as it takes more than a half a page of typewritten notes of explanation, however, these details are in the written submission I have handed to the Commission, and it should become very obvious by the length and convoluted detail of the boundaries that it will create a terrific amount of confusion for the electorate and is guaranteed to keep the constituents in the boundaries areas away from the holding polls. The second proposed boundary change that will impact us is Prince Edward Quinny West, with a population of one hundred five thousand thirty-five people. And it consists of the city of Prince Edward, the city of Quinny West, and the county of Northumberland, excepting the township of Hamilton, the Towne Coburn, and the municipality of Porco, which means it would take four municipalities away from us and move them to a different electoral district. So, when we look at options, county staff have investigated various options and provide the following two options for consideration by County Council, which we are presenting to you. For option one, we have the Northumberland Pine Ridge, which would be a population of one hundred and six thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven. And it's consisted of some well-defined boundaries and a compact area. They would be Northumberland County, the township of Cabin, Milkbrook, North Monahan, and Clarrington's Warford, the former Clark Township. The second option that we have come up with is a population of one hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-two, also consisting of another area of well-defined boundaries: Northumberland County, the township of Asquodala, Norwood, the township of Otunaby, South Monahan, and the township of Cabin, Milkbrook, North Monahan. Now, county staff have reviewed multiple options regarding how to ensure that existing and proposed electoral districts to the east of the county could have the optimal population number. Given that we wish to keep Northumberland County intact in one district, but there was no clear and easy solution. Changing the boundaries of one electoral district necessitates changing the boundaries of one next to it, and so on, and so on, creating a domino effect that impacts multiple areas. So, recommending our option one to the Commission would be advantageous for the following reasons: Northumberland County remains intact and will continue to be represented by one MP and one MPP. The population meets the Commission's criteria. All Northumberland County residents and businesses and all seven member municipalities would be represented by one MP and one MPP, thus maintaining a sense of unity within our county community. The geographic boundary is very easily understood. The name Northumberland Pine Ridge ensures that the extensive branding through economic development and tourism and transportation that's been done around the Northumberland name is not lost. And recommending our option two to the Commission would be advantageous for the following reasons: Northumberland County, again, remains intact and will continue to be represented by one MP and one MPP. The population meets the Commission's criteria. Northumberland County has a number of ties to the southern townships of Peterborough County, including tourism initiatives such as RTO eight, various Rice Lake initiatives, and economic development initiatives. All Northumberland County residents and businesses and all seven member municipalities would be represented by one MP and one MPP, thus maintaining a sense of unity within our community. The geographic boundary is easily understood. The name Northumberland South Peterborough ensures the extensive branding, again, economic development, tourism, and transportation, and that has been done around the Northumberland name and it will not be lost. The financial impact: While there are no direct financial impacts at the county for the recommended options, making no specific recommendations to the Commission regarding how Northumberland County can be kept intact with one electoral district may have negative financial consequences. If Northumberland County is split and becomes part of two electoral districts, it would be represented by two MPs and two MPPs. This may result in difficulty in securing federal and provincial funding for the county, something that is so necessary. If the name of Northumberland is not part of the name of the new electoral district, there could certainly be negative financial repercussions in terms of lost tourism revenues and lost opportunities for economic development, specifically in terms of business attraction strategies. So, the staff recommendations that Northumberland County staff and County Council endorse options one and two for inclusion in my submission as Warden of Northumberland County to the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario on November the twelfth. The inclusion of both of these options provides the Commission with some viable alternatives for consideration rather than the proposed electoral districts. Northumberland County staff and council also recommended that I, as Warden of Northumberland County, advise the Commission that should they choose to implement the proposed electoral boundary changes or a version thereof, that regardless of the geographic area, the name Northumberland be part of the district's name. For example, instead of the new proposed electoral district of Coortle Lakes Porco Coburn, that this district be renamed Coortle Lakes Northumberland, West Northumberland. Similarly, if the new proposed electoral district of Prince Edward Quinny West is created, that be named East Northumberland Quinny Prince Edward. So, the main point I want to leave with you is the name Northumberland is contained in many institutions, including the County of Northumberland, the Northumberland Federation of Agriculture, Northumberland Manufacturers Association, Chambers Northumberland, the Thumberley Community Futures Development Corporation, the Thumberley Hills Hospital, and it even extends into the socio-economic areas in terms of the Arch Gallery of Northumberland, Northumberland Choir, Northumberland Orchestra. And these are just examples of which I could name many more. And even without listing the private sector businesses that have Northumberland in their business names. And we recently posted on our county website, it was an electronic poll for people who were supporting keeping Northumberland as one unit, and within two weeks, we had eight hundred homes and businesses sign up. And when you take the average household occupation or even business occupation of two point five, that means we have two thousand people in a two-week short period who are supporting keeping the name of Northumberland alive and keeping the county together. So, finally, I just want to say, for those of you who may not know, there has always been Northumberland while Quinny West, the city of Coortle Lakes, is a relatively new district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, for coming today to our community to hear the concerns of both the area residents and individuals that are representing groups throughout the area. I won't be able to speak quite so loudly as Warden Brockanier. He's brought up some very good points that quite a number of people, I'm sure, after me will also echo. I once lived in a wonderfully named area of Porco called Township of Hope, but after provincial amalgamation, I now live in a rather ill-educated name, Porco Ward Two. I know the heartache and frustration of losing traditional names of where we live. A remapping of Ontario to fit fifteen new ridges is no small task. To add some levity to today, which I'm sure most of the submissions will be very unhappy with the proposed additions, I would recall quite blatantly the Spike Milligan's dramatic retelling of the County Division of Northern and Southern Ireland, where a giant map was placed on the island, was placed on a table, a large pencil produced, and local landowners, courtiers, and politicians, each had a hand on the pencil and kind of pulled it across the island, tugging it each way as their individual interests pertained. I'm sure that that will be, as I said, a lot of repetition in today's hearings and submissions. If the proposed changes stay, would you please consider keeping the name of Northumberland in the renaming process, as Northumberland being one of the traditional nineteen counties of upper Canada, as they stand now, are unable to disappear for both federal and provincial purposes? Thank you very much for your time.
Lord Gilchrist?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I sat through intolerable community meetings such as this and such as you're being called on to do over the next while, so I'll keep my remarks to a man. May I comment briefly under three hours? As a former Member of Parliament, as a present trustee of the school board, and as a businessman since thirty-five years in this remarkable district. In this important democratic exercise, it is easy to deal simply with numbers, and lose sight of what I might call on-the-ground realities. As a school board trustee, I deal with reality every day. For example, there might be two schools only a few kilometers apart on a map, so why not close one if enrollment is a problem? Ah, there's another problem. There's a river in between the two. No close-by bridges, so it's not an easy solution, and you don't have easy solutions to face in this exercise. Consolidating two schools in one town is one thing, but closing a village school and busing its kids for over an hour each way to the next nearest school is not a good solution to define your own. But does the Ministry of Education located in Toronto always comprehend such factors when making pontifical decrees of a one-size-fits-all basis? Not very well. It considers this seven thousand square kilometer board as more urban than rural, unless the local people figure out the solutions. And I ask you not to fall into that trap with Northumberland. Northumberland is rather unique in that it is caught between two significant bodies of water, north and south, Rice Lake and Lake Ontario, and its rural nature has not provided super highways at either end with which to quickly and conveniently reach other destinations. Consequently, from the consideration of geography alone, it is a compact and self-contained area with many common and desirable attributes. But it is in no way common in its interests, problems, and needs with communities as remote and diverse as Lindsay, which has been suggested, or even Peterborough, which is separated by the broad Rice Lake ceiling. Even Clarrington is remote and separated by a large area of oak bridges marined and greenbelt lands. Organizations have learned to accommodate these unique and immutable characteristics when structuring their operations. For example, the Peterborough Centre School Board recognizes the unique situation by dealing with Northumberland schools as a unit, even though they constitute a third of the board's complement. The thirty-three schools located in Northumberland are semi-self-administered, and I can tell you from personal experience that the views and understandings that occur about local issues are often not very well understood by even those Peterborough people, let alone Queen's Park or Ottawa bureaucrats. From a representational point of view, it might be seen that two MPs or MPPs could properly represent the whole of Northumberland. But I assure you that there would be times of conflict and a denial of the best interests of Northumberland citizens, even by two Members of the same party. Again, take our school board as an example. The so-called neighboring community of Clarrington, being much closer to the GTA, suffers from increasing enrollment and overcrowding of schools. Northumberland, with its more senior population, empty nesters, experiences declining enrollment and the need to sometimes close a school. Both communities, however, are served by the same board that must try to find more funds to satisfy one need greater than another. This would be virtually an impossible task for two different MPs trying to satisfy the needs of two zones of one geographical unit. Northumberland has a unique needs and opportunity, and should be recognized as so in paying electoral representation. It is very different from Lindsay or Clarrington or even Peterborough. Those areas may not seem remote to someone in Ottawa looking at a map, but the unique needs, semi-isolation, and common interests of Northumberland make it an area and a riding to be recognized as a unit, not an aggregation of parts to be thrown together with other disparate riders just to make up numbers. As a former MP of a hundred and fifteen thousand person riding in Metro Toronto, I can tell you that I have visited every home and been on every grand and sidewalk two times in two elections, and did not find it overly difficult. But to try to cover the highways and byways of substantially rural Northumberland with all its smaller communities in an election-rip period is much more difficult. How much less then is the likelihood of a prospective MP or MPP to hear the unique and legitimate views of Northumberland citizens? If the only goal of delineating and defining the riding is the number of people therein, that is a faulty promise. Clearly, the nature of the community or the riding is far more important than the numbers. Other delegations will be dealing with other aspects of the need to keep Northumberland whole and the name intact and move it forward as a composite unit in matters of transportation, education, recreation, tourism, agricultural specialization, our agriculture, and commercial development, all crucially important considerations, so I shall not duplicate their points. There will be many, I'm certain. I believe you will understand the uniqueness of this highly desirable composite, singular, and historic career. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Gilchrist?
Good afternoon, gentlemen, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this...
to this very important initiative. Like my father, public service flows in our blood, I guess, I wear several hats in coming before you today. I was a provincial Member of Parliament, and for 35 years I've been a resident and businessperson in this riding as well. First, some general observations, if I may. The current redistribution proposals alter the configuration of every riding in the regions of Eastern GTA and central eastern Ontario, with the exception of Peterborough. Current proposals are exceptionally good at balancing the population to be distributed to each new riding, but they do not, in many cases, reflect a community of interest between the various towns, townships, and cities being arrayed into different ridings. Having a community of interest is critically important, as it tends to reflect other factors which would have a very pronounced impact on the work being done by the federal, and if copied by the province provincial, elected officials and their staff. Many of the social service agencies, the courts, and other government functions at all three levels are coordinated on the basis of regional or county boundaries. Crossing those boundaries dramatically reduces the effectiveness of the elected official as their time and the time of their staff must now be divided while dealing with multiple community resources. The proposed boundaries also seem to pay little heed to known expansion plans within several municipalities in eastern Ontario under the provincial Places to Grow Planning provisions. For example, all the planning decisions have already been made to add 70,000 additional residents to North Bickery in the seats of development. Thousands of homes are already zoned, and in many cases, lots have been serviced, houses built, and sold already. So solving population inequalities that exist today without heed to the new inequalities which will, not might, but will, occur long before the next legislated redistribution exercise would seem somewhat shortsighted. With all the above, it is possible to reconfigure the proposed boundary changes in a way which restores a dramatically improved community of interest between all the municipalities captured in each riding. I've attached a map which shows the suggested changes and detailed those changes in the chart, but the limited time available to me this afternoon, I'd like to restrict the bulk of my comments to the proposal for this area. As I mentioned, I've been a resident of Northumberland County for over 35 years, initially owning the family farm, I had homes in Hamilton Township and Port Hope, but most relevantly, I developed a shopping centre in what was then the Township of Hamilton and has since been annexed by the Town of Coburg. For six months prior to building that shopping centre, I did intensive market research to develop the shopping, to determine the shopping patterns of residents of western Northumberland and beyond. I can tell you that there is absolutely no doubt, based on that research as well as 35 years of working and socializing with residents of the county, that Coburg is the commercial and social hub of Northumberland County. Given the geographical constraints around this county, including Rice Lake forming a roof to the north, the Trent River founding a boundary to the east, Lake Ontario the south, Coburg became the natural centre for the county government, as well as the location for the Ontario Court for this region and the overwhelming majority of social service agency head offices. So the current proposals for like Coburg, Port Hope, and Lindsay is extremely unpopular and from the perspective of the elected representative, unworkable. I cannot stress strongly enough how difficult and inefficient it would be to try and cover a riding with two very distinct communities of interest and no shared common interest across the riding. Lindsay is indisputably the focal point for all the communities currently found in the existing riding of Coretho, Halliburton, Brock, and it is essential that that community of interest be retained. The current proposals run counter to all historical, social, and commercial patterns in the counties of Northumberland, Coretho Lakes, and Halliburton. So if I leave you with only two urgent and essential changes to your existing boundary proposals, it would be to ensure that one riding encompasses the entire county of North umberland and as a corollary to that change, that the name Northumberland be included in the name of the riding. To be honest with you, the existing riding boundaries today, Northumberland, Quinney West, work, and while the population of the riding at 125,000 is well above the target number, there's a compelling argument to be made for retaining that inequity, given the absolutely essential need to keep Northumberland County in one riding. As an alternative, if the Commission is committed to reaching the target population, then adding the portion of Clarendon, which falls east of Highway 115, and the portion of the townships of Caban-Monahan, which falls south of Highway 115 and east of Highway 28, would add sufficient population to that of the county to arrive within 4% of the target and well above the population of your proposal for ridings such as Medea. There's one other set of brief comments I'd like to offer about the perspective you've taken in construction of all the ridings in southern Ontario. Unlike in the north, where geography has provided for a different consideration of target populations, there has been no similar consideration of the increased challenges faced by elected officials and their staff and by the populations they serve as riding sizes increase in the south. Having been a member of the Ontario Legislature for years and worked with members from rural and urban ridings, I have no hesitation suggesting it is patently unfair for those in rural ridings to be expected to serve the same number of constituents but having them spread over vastly greater geography. I would suggest, as a rule of thumb, the Commission consider a revised target for rural ridings, which is 5% below the current average target population, and similarly, in the urban ridings, one which is 5% above. When you consider that I could have walked across my riding in not much more than two hours, but it takes that long to drive, probably bending the speed limit, to reach from the northwest corner of this riding to its current southeast boundary, it cannot fault that the MPP, the MP in this riding, is able to attend events and offer personal assistance to his riding in the same way as to be provided by his colleagues in the GTA, Ottawa, London, or Hamilton Rides. Adjusting the population of Toronto, for example, by only 5%, would reduce the number of proposed ridings from 26 to 24, which is still a significant increase from 22 and a half that exists today, notwithstanding the fact that contrary to a lot of public impression, Toronto is growing slower than the provincial average. In the future, the main growth will be in Durham, York, P L, and Halton regions, and the Commission surely must take heed to the fact that over the next 10 years, you will see the same sort of inequalities occur as currently exist in the riding of Oakbridge's Markham, which has grown to twice the size of the average riding in this province. So with that, gentlemen, I would encourage you to look very seriously at factoring in the geographical challenges faced by rural MPs and making sure that their ability to offer top-quality service and be accessible to all of the people they serve is equal to that given by MPs in the urban ridings. Thank you very much for considering.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners, my name is Rick Arlock, I'm a Member of Parliament for Northumberland, Quinney West, and heeding your advice before this meeting, I will try to not cover the same grounds as previous speakers, although I think in order to better explain myself, we'll have to at least acknowledge the statements that were made. Included in your package that I gave you, you will notice that there are some historical documents, some historical maps, as well as a description of the statutory chronology of Ontario, counties and municipalities as compiled, combined by Thomas Hillman. I'll start off by saying that I know that the Commission has a very difficult job to do. You must exercise the wisdom of Solomon and at the same time be sensitive to those criteria which you list in your website, they be the socio-economic and historical repercussions of dividing or instituting new electoral districts in the Dominion of Canada in particular, in the province of Ontario. As has been mentioned by the Warden of Northumberland, a great deal of thought, planning, and deep, expatriated dollars have been spent in branding the name Northumberland to, as the maps that I gave you and the historical representations will indicate, Northumberland has existed and is one of the oldest counties in the Dominion of Canada and for sure in the then Upper Canada and now Ontario. In fact, Northumberland has existed for over 210 years, as indicated on those maps. In addition to that, it has been an electoral district or a riding since Confederation. In other words, the different ridings that have occurred, and there was an east and west Northumberland, and Northumberland during, the name Northumberland has been on the electoral map up until this suggested map, so 100, over 140 years of history with the name Northumberland attached to it. I endorse, and I believe the county warden has given you the county council recommendation, I endorse everything that he said, especially the recommendation that's presented by council. As has been mentioned by the Commissioner, the desired riding of 106, I was a little bit generous, I said 108, the current riding of 125,000 people is manageable by a Member of Parliament. As has been said, we cannot be, there cannot be a cookie-cutter approach to discerning electoral districts. By that I mean, there is a difference between rural Canada and more metropolitan areas like Toronto, Durham, and other regions to our west. I am going to tell you that rural Ontarians and rural Canadians feel neglected. They feel neglected in many ways, and especially by their governments, because they feel government tends to concentrate on population alone, and I say that because the maps that have been drawn all take into account solely numbers of people, in other words, 106, solely populations. I live in a political world. My political world is rural Canada, rural Ontario, and specifically Northumberland, Quinney West, and I can tell you there is meaning to a name. As I have indicated to you, Northumberland's existed for 210 years as a county, and as I previously mentioned, over 140 years as an electoral district, there is meaning to a name, as has been indicated by other speakers. When it comes down to the ability of a Member of Parliament to service a larger geographic area such as Northumberland, Quinney West, and a greater population than the average riding, that Member of Parliament's budget is compensated for. Why do I say that? I say that because of the way we have designed, during my tenure, the way we serve the people of our riding. We have an outreach program that goes to some of the bigger municipalities. In other words, the Member of Parliament generally in a riding has one office. Traditionally, here in Northumberland, Quinney West, there have been two offices. What we do is, once a week, we close either one of those offices and go to a larger municipality and deliver MP services. During the time that the House of Commons is not sent, we have what we refer to as a mobile constituency office, and I can tell you, we go to every village and indeed Hamilton, in some cases, every corner, and we set up a trailer or we rent a church hall or a legion, and we hold MP office hours and provide the services that one would normally find in MP's office. Why do I mention that? I mention that because the current riding of Northumberland, Quinney West, is manageable by a Member of Parliament, should he or she do his or her business being sensitive to the rural nature and the great expanse of the riding. I think it's also necessary to look at, when we deal with the city of Quinney West, one gets the impression that it is an urban centre. Well, in actual fact, it's a rural municipality of a number of townships, and as has been previously mentioned, if it is in the interest, and I know it is in your interest, to increase the number of people who are participating in the election, I can tell you that in one township that was in the past not part of this electoral district, it took us two elections to get the message out to the people in Sydney Township that they were actually voting in Northumberland, Quinney West, and not in the neighbouring riding. As I say, I'm deviating from my presentation because much of what I have before you has been said, but I need you to know, and would like you to know, and do know that you already know, that my neighbours to the west have made a proposition to you, or I should say the neighbouring MPs, Mr. Daryl Cramp and Scott Reed, made some suggestions that changed only slightly from the current status quo. So what is my message? And to the east, you will be hearing, I believe, today from a Member of Provincial Parliament to deal with Halliburton, Brock, so I'll leave it up to them to make their interventions, but I think you'll see that their recommendation is, the status quo is workable, it is manageable, and it means something from a socio-economic and historical point of view. In closing, I once again will recognize that this Commission has a very difficult job before you, but I ask you to take into consideration the socio-economic as well as the historical existence of the county of Northumberland in an electoral district, and do agree with my previous speaker, my Warden, who has suggested some hominature with regard to, if you keep, I should say, if you keep, or something similar to, the current proposed electoral district map distribution. I finish by saying that you cannot, as has been previously mentioned by Speaker Justin Forman, you cannot compare a rural riding to a city riding. The Member of Parliament here can, in a rural riding, we can service, provide the services to our constituents in a larger geographic area because from a practical perspective, we do get additional funding from Parliament to do that. Once again, thank you very much for being here in Coburg, and I do hope that the Commission takes into account 210 years. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to appear before the Commission today. I am a Member of Provincial Parliament from the now-riding of Halliburton, Port Hope Lakes, Brock. These current boundaries have existed federally since 2002. I have them all listed here, which are nine, but basically it's Halliburton County, three parts of Peterbrook County, Brock Township, and of course, Port Hope Lakes, the largest area. I have a map that I've given in the presentation that shows our population trends, and our population has actually declined 1.3% since 2006, so we are not a high-growth area. I know that you know what it says in the act, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the points. In the Commission, it says that to respect the community of interest or community of identity in an historical pattern of an electoral district in the province, manage and maintain a manageable geographic size for electoral districts in partially populated rural and northern regions, and predominantly I represent a rural riding, and when considering these factors, the Commission must make every effort to ensure that, except in circumstances of extraordinary areas, the population be within 25% plus or minus of the electoral district. So the upper limit of deviation would be 132,000 roughly, and the lower being around 80,000. I just wanted to set the stage for that. I can decide, obviously, several ridings, but Peterbrook was used as an example, that the current electoral district of Halliburton, Brock, is the decline of 1.3%. the current electoral district of Halliburton Brock is the decline of 1.3%. The current electoral district of Peterborough represents a 2% increase in population for the same period. Peterborough has a population of 1,362 more than Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock. So what is proposed is that Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock would be divided into two electoral districts, Halliburton-Oxbridge and Portle Lakes-Portlehead-Coburg. Peterborough would remain unchanged despite its higher population and higher growth. So assuming a target population for new electoral districts is between 106,000 and 108,000, the current ridings of Halliburton, Portle Lakes, Brock, and Peterborough are, Halliburton and Portle Lakes being about 9% to 11% over optimum target, Peterborough being 10% to 12% over the optimum target. So both electoral districts are well below the maximum 25% acceptable deviation. For the communities of interest, all the communities within City of Portle Lakes have common communities of interest. I've given you several examples of my presentation, but they include everything from police, fire, social services, social housing, healthcare, material works, education, road services, recreation, tourism. So the communities of Brock and Peterborough Townships and Halliburton County are also linked in varying degrees to the city of Portle Lakes through such activities as their social services, housing services, education, the long-term care, parteria disability, parteria works, children's aids, again, many that are mentioned. So there's virtually no existing community of interest between Oxbridge Township and the northern part of the current electoral district of Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock, especially if you were, it basically goes to Davis Drive, so specifically if you were the township of Oxbridge, and then you had to go to the northern part of Halliburton County, which is like Dorset or Oxtown Narrows. And the same with the boundary of, proposed boundary of the township of Oxbridge-Davis Drive, to go all the way over to the eastern part of my Peterborough County part, being in Astley. The distance between those routes are extensive, it's hours and hours of driving, and again, it's a challenge to service. I want to personally service my communities as much as I can, and it certainly presents a greater challenge with proposed boundaries of the Halliburton-Oxbridge area. But there is no, you know, existing community of interest between the town of Lindsay on the other part and the southern part of Portle Lakes, Cavan-Monaghan, to be joined with the communities of Portlehead and Coburg. In the years following the amalgamation, the communities within City of Portle Lakes, which before that were known as County of Victoria, the City of Portle Lakes then came in as a single-tier government where the County of Victoria was two-tier. There was a lot of emotion, a lot of division within the communities. And just now, over a decade later, we are trying to have a smooth operation within the same geographical area as the County of Victoria, but now called Portle Lakes. I know that the council of Portle Lakes has passed a resolution opposing the proposed change. The council of North Portle, which would be the Peterborough County, one of my Peterborough County areas, wants to remain within the maintained electoral district of Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock. They're quite frightened that they would be grouped in with such an extensively distanced community of the township of Oxbridge. Halliburton County, who I know you're going to hear next, has passed a resolution requesting that the current electoral district of Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock remain intact. The council of Brock Township passed a resolution also urging that their community remain part of Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock. And the council of Cavan-Monaghan passed a resolution opposing the proposed change. They want to stay status quo. I believe you've heard lots from Portlehead and Coburg councils, there may be more to come, that they are opposing the proposed changes. The councils, the council of township of Oxbridge oppose the proposed change. I don't know if you've heard from them yet, but maybe as the hearings go on, I know Durham is proposing their own areas for boundary redistribution. So I'm hoping that you can see most of all my councils are opposed to the proposed changes. We feel that we can maintain the current riding boundaries, even though it's just slightly above the target of the amount of residents that you'd like it. But our communities of interest have been that way for a long, long time. We function quite well within those boundaries. And they, as municipal councils rightly should, have a lot of the voice when you make your decisions. They would all like to stay intact with the riding we have now of Halliburton and Portle Lakes Brock. So I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
I'm just a citizen of Coburg, that's my point of view here, and however, I'm also a citizen of Northumberland. And my point is that a new riding should not split the community. Let me just go back over what the terms of reference are. The new, the commission has been directed by an Electoral Boundaries Readjustment Act to readjust boundaries so that they have a population of approximately 106,000 in each one. But the Act, and I quote, permits the commission to depart from the quota where necessary or desirable in order to respect the community of interest or the community of identity in, or the historical pattern of an electoral district in the province. I think the number of our speakers have already pointed that out. This is quoted from the commission's reasons for the proposed electoral boundaries. I can't speak for other electorates, but Northumberland County is definitely a community with strong ties amongst the towns and the rural areas inside its boundaries. There are activities that we think of as Northumberland activities. These include tourism, arts organisations, and clubs. The county itself is very active in promoting tourism of Northumberland as a whole. And I personally belong to two organisations which cater to Northumberland, the North umberland Photography Club and the Arts Council of Northumberland. And I think Warden Brockinio mentioned a number of others. Communities are also defined by their joint actions on economic issues and interactions with government bodies, and historically, Northumberland has acted as a clearly identifiable entity. These factors have meant that Northumberland County is not only a municipal government body, but is also a community and should not be split. The 2011 census gives the population of Northumberland as 82,123, so the commission would no doubt want to add population from an adjacent community. I would expect that's what you'd want to do, given what I've read in all the stuff. And I leave it to the commission, though, to decide where the additional 25,000 should come from. My only concern is that Northumberland should not be split. Thank you.
Will for Dave.
I've given members of the commission my 13 pages, I assure you I will not read them all, but there's some of it implicating what has been said. This presentation is from me as an individual, not for an organisation. I have practiced law in the municipality of Portle since 1971. I was a school trustee on the County Public School Board from 1982 to 1994, and a member of the Policy Committee of the Ontario Public School Boards Association, and a past chair of the Northumberland Community Digital Centre Board and the Portle Planning Board, and currently National Secretary of Fair Book Canada. I begin by thanking the commission for trying to deal fairly with central east Ontario. The present six electoral districts in the belt between Leeds-Grenville and the Gare Conduit area all have growing populations, well below quotient, and Mississippi Mills must also be accommodated. By the way, since you have not agreed with the numbers in the interest of time, I will not read all the numbers. This growing region has 6.93 electoral quotients. However, your proposal wisely lets Northern Ontario keep its 10 ridings, so the 111 electoral districts for Southern Ontario have an average population of 108,287. Even using the Southern figure, this belt's residents should have 6.8 of the new electoral districts. And then there's Durham Region, which is also growing. Brock Township wants to stay with Portle Lakes where it's been since 1947, so excluding Brock, Durham has 596,780 residents. That is 5.62 quotients, or using the Southern Ontario average, 5.51 ridings. So together, these areas deserve 12.31 ridings. Euryphalos over shift, the North Havelox Bridge in New York-Simpson, but South Region deserves 12.27 ridings, and Yorkhamness 12, which I believe is fair. Durham Region, of course, would love to have six full ridings, and the rest of us would love to have seven full ridings, and that's 13, and unfortunately, you don't have a spare riding in your bank pockets. Problem with the commission's proposal is that it splits municipality of Portle Lakes into two, and as a result, splits Northumberland County into two. The origin of the proposal is the proposed electoral district of Halliburton-Nexwich, which has generated much opposition. Second problem is the proposed electoral district of Portle Lakes, Portlehead-Coburg. I appreciate the problem the commission faced in Durham Region. Your first solution was to put 49,000 in change of the surplus into Portle Lakes-Halliburton, South Oxford, Skugarden-Brock, and then put Clarington Ward 4, the geographical township of Clark, into Portlehead-Coburg, and put the North Havelox Bridge in New York-Simpson. This left 538,000 in change for the five whole Durham Region ridings, an average of 107,000 in change compared with the Southern Ontario average, under 8,287. I suggest this proposal is harmful and unnecessary and suggests some better solutions. I first want to note that it is noteworthy what has been the result of parliament cutting the preparation time for these hearings in half. The four counties of Northumberland, Hastings, Lemmings-Nambyton, and Tromahnae, plus Durham Region, did not have time to consider and adjust to each other's proposals, as of course you saw in Dalvo last week.
Before you go any further, you understand this, not our doing.
I do, I said parliament's, I said parliament's action in cutting the preparation time in So for Northumberland County, I first propose, as the county does, to maintain the commission's proposals of Wentworth, Clark, and Cavan-Monaghan to Portlehead-Coburg. In the event that the commission finds some Durham infideration, and I have found one, that keeps Clarington in a single riding, you could still have Northumberland plus Cavan-Monaghan with 70, sorry, 19,727 residents, 14.6% below quotient. This alignment would be acceptable. In this presentation, I am not proposing anything deviating more than 15% from quotient. Northumberland-Cavan-Monaghan is preferable, keeping the present Northumberland-Queenie West, which is an artificial pairing, since the Dalvo-Queenie West area is oriented to Kingston rather than Peterborough. Northumberland County has frankly no commonalities with Queenie West other than the federal and provincial riding. Further, the present Northumberland-Queenie West is 17.93% over quotient, 125,261 residents, while you are proposing in Toronto, 25 ridings with an average of 104,602 residents each. I would object, and I don't think I'm the only one, to five Toronto voters being worth six voters in Northumberland. The commission proposes to combine Cavan-Monaghan's 18, sorry, 8,601 residents with Portlehead-Coburg. This is not hard to contemplate. Now, we're in Portlehead, we're only about 25 minutes apart. Cavan and Nowick are always in the same electoral district as adjacent Portlehead until 1987. And although they're now in Peterborough County, they've never been in the electoral district of Peterborough, because it's always had more than the electoral quotient already. They recently shared a school trustee with Portlehead and Restville in the St. East School District, North of Pine Ridge. Commission also proposes to link the 16,150 residents of Clarington Ward 4, the geographic township of Clark, with Portlehead-Coburg. Clark Township has always had a separate identity from the west half of Clarington. The urban population centre of Newcastle has its own Newcastle and District Chamber of Commerce, and the Newcastle Yacht Club and Marina. Newcastle has about 7,600 residents, half the population of geographic township of Clark. Clark Township's students attend Clark High School. This link is not hard to contemplate, since residents of Clark Township and the budding Hope Township have always had many things in common. They do use to share a school trustee. I have a long section here about Northumberland County, which contains many points made by others. I will point out a couple. Our news media include Northumberland Today, published five times per week, and Northumberland News twice weekly, and we are covered by CHX TV in Peterborough. The Portle High School School Board serves not only Northumberland, but Clarington, including Clark Township, and Peterborough County, including Cavan-Monaghan, but not the municipality of Portle Lakes. Northumberland is a judicial district, and by the way, the Ontario Criminal Court does sit in three locations here, Coburg, Portlehead, and Priton. I just want to make a footnote about South Monaghan and Autonomy, because the county has suggested adding all of South Monaghan and Autonomy to Northumberland, which is fine with me, but I've given you some detail there to suggest that if you don't like that, you might at least consider adding South Monaghan and keeping it along with Cavan-Monaghan, which I think would make sense to those people. It's not an important element of my submission, it's a footnote which I think you might find of interest. You need to find a solution for Durham Region, assuming you keep Brock in Portle Lakes-Halliburton-Brock. And after putting Clarington Ward 4, the geographic township of Clark, with Portlehead-Coburg, as you had proposed, you would have 576,000, 555 residents for the five Durham ridings, an average of 115,311 each. And I'm sure you'll hear at your next set of hearings, many Ashaway residents want to keep the electoral district of Ashaway alone, and many Clarington residents will object to Curtis being split in half, you split it in half north-south, and will suggest that the west half of Clarington should be kept together rather than Clarington's wards one and two all being split, they run north and south. So for example, here is one way to do this. Add the south half of Oxford to Pickering, making Pickering Oxford, with 105,000 residents rather than the proposed Pickering-Brooklyn, which may seem unnatural to many. And if you decide to keep Oxford United, Pickering Oxford should still have a good number. Ajax has 109,600. Since the proposed Whitby is rather small, and some Whitby residents want to keep the whole town together, let Whitby improve the whole town, 14.9% over quotient, still within that 15% target. Then you can have an Ashaway district with 121,391 residents, I've done the math from the Snatscam website, that runs north Tomlin Road, excluding the area east of Harmony Road and north of Peterborough Street. Durham District would then be the rest of Clarington, North Ashaway, and Skugham, with a total of 118,176. That's only one way to do it. The point is, you can, no matter how you do it, you can accommodate the recommended Northumberland-Pine Ridge area or riding. Then you have, of course, problems in Dalvo and Kingston, where a few of the presenters appear to be aware of Northumberland County's recommendation. So what do you do with Queenie West? The present proposal.
Mr Day, are your suggestions in the material you gave us today similar to what you left with us earlier last week? As it relates to the Dalvo?
Didn't leave anything with you last week. I did send in a notice of intent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Long ago.
I have something here that's six or seven pages in length. I told you against the notice of intent.
Yes, no, these are different.
Okay, thank you.
I did give nine possible alternatives, simply to show that there are many ways to accommodate Queenie West. And I'm pointing out that your current proposal is that those four ridings have 4.3 quotients. So they can all afford to lose 37,000 people to the proposed Northumberland-Pine Ridge. In other words, they can afford to lose east Northumberland and still have a good number. The choice of which of those nine alternatives, and I'm sure there may be others, will obviously depend on what obviously depend on, on, uh, what people in that area say. Uh, last Thursday, uh, your honor asked us how to let all four counties stay together. And so Plan A does that, without deviating more than 12.9% from quotient, mainly Hastings, Lemongestnanican and Semple, keeping all those counties together, Bellville, Quinty West, keeping the urban area together, and Larnar Tromnack, keeping Tromnack together. Uh, as Rick Merlock told you a moment ago, some Quinty West residents already think they are owning in the same writing as the city of Bell. And that is not surprising, that has always been a problem in the Clarington area even before they had Sydney Township. It's even worse now. So, uh, it really is a natural combination, Bellville, Quinty West. But it's not the only one. Um, several of these plans are plans that were proposed to you last week, or minor modifications of plans that were proposed here last week. So I won't say anything more about them. I only wanted to add one small footnote. I would not have expected to be saying anything to you today about proportional representation because it's outside your mandate, but that the Nova Scotia Provincial Boundaries Commission has encouraged me, uh, to do just that, because they, uh, wrote a, uh, excellent summary of the case for proportional representation and recommended that the Nova Scotia Government, uh, undertake a process to consider it. Of course, we had such a process provincially in Ontario, which produced a result that was not the best model and was not, in fact, the model recommended by the Law Commission of Canada. Um, but other than the Law Commission of Canada having made a recommendation, there's been no federal process. And it's particularly appropriate that I mention this in, uh, this area, because as I pointed out, this 11 federal writings from, uh, Leach, Granville, Semple, Bay and Muskoka, outside of PTA, is one of the prime examples. Biggest example, of course, was the province of Saskatchewan, where, uh, the NDP vote was 31% and elected nobody, the most blatant case for proportional representation on a provincial level. But in this bill, conservative voters cast 53% of those votes and elected 91% of those 1MPs. NDP voters cast 21%, and elected no one. Liberal voters cast 19% of the votes, thanks to the being concentrated in Kingston, elected a 1MP. So I, uh, I leave that awkwardly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. (applause) Uh, Warden Murray, your theory? Would I pronounce that correctly?
It's good enough, sir. Well, thank you, Commissioner, for hearing us, uh, in over, no, we're a fair way to wait. I'd just like to say that we sent our presentation to Union Avenue, so I won't go over that again. And hearing Sir Chairman's remarks about not repeating issues that have already been raised, I would just say that Roy Scott raised the issues that are most concerning to us. Uh, one of the things that I think, uh, is a concern to us is that provincial boundaries traditionally will be followed in federal boundaries. And, uh, our, uh, connection with the city of Ortholakes and the particular area of Towne Lindsay, uh, that they administer our social service and social housing programs. Uh, if they remove from the writing, uh, and our analyst Goldberg and Lord Hope, I don't know where they would put us in terms of, of, uh, getting the funding for our area. Uh, I think that's a huge issue with us, especially, um, because we've done one of the tour departments for province. Communities of interest, uh, well, they, they are very well. We have virtually not many problems with the Oxfordshire. They're more related to Durham, and one of the suggestions we've made is perhaps that, I understand the difficulty of your task, gentlemen, this domino effect every time you move something, you move a boundary, you change the population basis, but, uh, it's an experience, it's a three-hour drive from Bayless Drive to Dorset. That's just Mark and Sullivan, I think, uh, MPP Scott, uh, suggested that to you. So basically, we're saying, uh, in provincial policy, we're not even mentioning areas of places to grow. Growth in Halliburton County and this writing is very small, probably will be small in the future, uh, looking at the growth of Durham Region and those areas, they have much more potential to grow. So we're asking you to consider leaving those boundaries alone and tweaking whatever we have to, to accommodate them. Thanks very much.
Thank you. (applause) Warden, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
You may or may not be able to answer this. The, we've heard some suggestions, both today and in numerous written submissions we've received, that one possible solution to the finding some extra population for County of Northumberland if we keep it whole is to include Cavan Monahan.
In Halliburton?
Yes. No, no, in, uh, in, in a electoral district that would include Northumberland County. And there is a suggestion by some people that there is community of interest between those people and the people to the south. Are you able to comment on this?
Uh, if I were intelligent, then... (laughter) I really, I really wouldn't want to comment on it, because I think it would be, it would be some community of interest, but not much, I'm not sure. Right?
My name is David O'Grady. Uh, my name is David O'Grady, who lives in Ordo, which is our township and municipality of Clarington. Splitting the municipality of Clarington into three separate electoral districts is, in my opinion, not a good choice. It would be, in fact, a very bad choice. We will not have unified representation, and what Clarington needs will not be voiced either federally or provincially if the proposed division was supported. Further to this, the rural portion of our municipality, which is the largest agricultural area east of Toronto, uh, will be split in such a way there'll be no unified voice to ensure the agricultural sector is A represented and B protected. I realize the importance of political representation on a population basis. However, of equal importance and significant concern are the unintended and sometimes intangible consequences this division will have on Clarington. These would include such aspects as economic, health, social services, and perhaps the most important of all, the fracturing of the spirit of Clarington as a community. I would urge you to rethink these new electoral divisions and take into account the need for our community to be adequately represented as an entity in the future. Thank you very much.
Any suggestions? Any suggestions as to how we might do it?
Um, those will probably come forward in Oshawa, since we have many Clarington people going to come. I just came here to represent Clarington at this meeting.
Tom Sears.
Justice Allen, I was the Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to present our views on the upcoming changes to the electoral boundaries. My name is Tom Sears. I'm here today in the capacity as President of the Northumberland Quinty West, current from the Northumberland Quinty West Federal Liberal Writing Association. Like many who I imagine have presented to you already and will in the days ahead, in every community there's a small number of people who seem to be more active as volunteers in their communities. That is true here, and you can see that by the number of people who show up and demonstrate their support, and, uh, many of the most people in the room today. In my own case, in addition to heading our federal writing association, I'm also a member of the Northumberland Tales Possible Board, here in Coburg, and I serve on the Strategy and Instruction Committee of Trinity College School in nearby Port Hope. People who are active in their communities greatly appreciate having an opportunity to participate in changes that affect them and their communities, and hopefully provide information to you that can result in best possible decisions to be made for the families and fellow citizens that we all serve. I'll also underscore three ideas that you've mentioned, but may not be fully heard. None of us are envious of the challenges and the complexity you face in making this proposal to Parliament. And although some have proposed the status quo, uh, we all do understand that change is needed to address core historic community value, representation by population. And we recognize that your proposal has been carefully crafted, and that any proposed modifications will have residual effects on other writings. With these three concepts in mind, I've come before you today with carefully constructed views of our association, and many other stakeholders we have communicated with over the past several months in our current writing, but also in neighboring writings, north, east and west here. Change is never easy. I know that you will hear or have heard other proposals where the main theme is to keep Northumberland County intact as a federal electoral district. I know that because as we've communicated to people over the last several months, we've heard that resentment cry. And that is frankly harming for us as well. Allow me to explain whether the proposal to split Northumberland County into a serious and damaging effect to our citizens and...
Do you have that message?
You have that message. Okay, then we'll need to continue on. There are other examples offered by. Administrative centres in Audlin versus Nations, municipalities such as Brighton, Port Hope, Trent Hills, and the town of Coburg are served by the Northumberland Community's Future Development Corporation, and that corporation is funded by the Federal Economic Agency. Should we end up having two MPs and deal with this complexity, we feel that there are more than double the efforts to obtain their support from these agencies. And should these MPs be from different parties, we envisage that our needs could become a point of random between parties rather than a single coherent point of contact representing our needs. Northumberland is not a major urban centre, as you've heard, with a diverse population, and it's important to us to have a simple point of reference federally to maximize the benefits for residents of the county. You've heard the argument from the Warden and others, I'll be part here to support that effort. A few more examples include the Northumberland County community and social services provides housing, social services, services for young parents and complacent services to the citizens of the county as a complete geographical area. A politically divided county would reduce our ability to serve these young, uh, parents, the unemployed, and those requiring housing and other social services. Other groups of the Northumberland County wide rep are relevant include the elder abuse network and the child development centre. The work of these agencies could arguably be carried out without having an intact North umberland County electoral district, but I submit it would complicate matters to them. Northumberland County is tied together by common interests that extend beyond the economic ones listed above. Something you may not be aware of, our writing has one of the highest unemployment rates in the entire province at 7.3%, and is higher in certain components of our community. This figure does not exclude those that have given up the search for employment. The work of the Northumberland County social services agencies is paramount to the health and wellbeing of our citizens. We are concerned that if the Commission's proposal were to go ahead and distract it, these agencies could be negatively affected, resulting in a reduced level of effective service in the GORI. We sincerely request that the Commission reconsider its proposal to split the county of today. You've, uh, heard from many presenters previously, and so I won't go on with my form of remarks that basically says we support solution one that the Warden has presented. There is another concern, and that is the community of interest. If I could raise that for another moment. We're predominantly a rural writing in small towns like Coburg, Port Hope and Brighton that service centres for shopping, education, banking and healthcare. These existing patterns of life, for shopping, et cetera, represent what we feel are the communities of interest. And due to the geographic reality, historical patterns have been presented, the road structure, there's frankly no community of interest between our community, which runs in east-west direction along Lake Ontario, and the lovely but very distant Halliburton, Corthorix regions. Ever since the federal map was first drawn, Northumberland County has never had a political, social, economic relationship with either of these areas. We feel that the Commission's proposed changes, putting back, hamper our ability to evolve and grow as a community. This duality raises another concern, that we have seen when two nice but unconnected communities are joined for convenience sake. We have seen a sense of us and them emerge. In writings like ours, the voters develop a concern that their candidate or MP does not really represent their community of interest. They can become disengaged in the election process. Today, all parties in our writing have engaged writing associations, members and voters. And we worry that the Commission's current proposal that brings together two communities that have little mutuality of interest could have negative consequences for something that all parties support: voter engagement. I'm just skipping ahead of what others have said. The combined populations of the entirety of Northumberland County, Clarington Ward and Cavan Monahan Township will result in an electoral district of 106,000 people, well when the Commission's tolerant selves. You've heard people speak, and we, in our research, went north, east and west of us. Um, Quinty West is currently in our writing, and we would like, if they have to be split off, that they find a good home, considering their... Voters, members, supporters and executives live in that area, and we, we support the proposal you heard in Bellville, of the three cities, Bellville, Trenton and Prince Edward County, coming together, which would reunite Quinty West and Quinty. On the north of us, you've heard today, uh, that there's proposals from the north of us that would recommend, uh, minor changes, not the ones that we proposed. And you all have already heard from the east of us, from the west of us, I should say as well, uh, that, uh, there, there's some sensitivity around Clarington. From our point of view, we feel that, um, we do not have a direct solution for this, but recognize that the Commission does have discretion to fluctuate the size of writings by 25%. And we leave that ultimate decision to the Commission's wisdom once you've heard proposals from the, from our end, as well as those coming from our neighbours to the east. Again, I agree to rate, we really do not envy the rule you make, uh, the rule you have in front of you for making this offer, but, uh, we'll stop here.
You had the, uh, community of interest, this is Clark in here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Clark Township.
Yeah.
You have the community of interest.
Yes.
There and here. Correct?
That's right. They, uh, in, in, uh, prior, uh, writing re distributions, they were part of North umberland County, and they also share a school district.
Including Newcastle.
Uh, don't believe those Newcastle. Yes, that's, uh, yes.
I mean, your, your map here proposes the whole...
Yeah.
Ward Four, Clark.
Yes. Yeah, that's what we would propose, and that's what the order is going to be.
We've heard other suggestions that, uh, Cavan Monahan has more of an interest that a way, or even into Peterborough. Do you have a comment?
I don't. The comment I do have is that when we take a look at the challenges of trying to create the writing and, and retain our current community of interest within Northumberland County, uh, if you'd like us to try and achieve 106,000, obviously we need to, if we're going to lose Quinty West, it's a numbers game, if we're going to do rep by pop, uh, it would be up to the Commission to decide that that's not necessary, but from our point of view, is trying to meet the challenges that you've established, we would need to take some additional population from somewhere. And they have historically changed initial writing before, and we do have shared school divisions.
They seem to want to go somewhere else, and everybody sort of wants them.
Yeah. They're very black, though, aren't they?
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Joel Lenoire?
Good afternoon. And as you know, my name is Joel Lenoire, and I am the Deputy Clerk for Legislative Services for the...
Your name is, your surname, please?
Sure. L E N O Y R E. So I'm here to speak on behalf of council for the city of Ortholakes regarding the proposed electoral boundary changes to the course of lakes, Halliburton, Rock writing. And I'd also like to advise a member of our council, Councilor Doug Ellsley is in attendance with us today as well. And I'd like to start by outlining the points that I'm going to be talking about today. First, I'm going to speak about a resolution passed... this commission. So at its meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, council adopted a resolution relating to this hearing and the work of this commission, and I'll read it to you now, that appropriate staff present a deputation to the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for Ontario on this initiative, respectfully requesting that any federal election boundary changes maintain the entire current municipal area and be represented by one member of parliament. So as I outlined in the resolution, the key message that I want to deliver today is council's request that any federal election boundary changes maintain the entire city of Coortle Lakes municipal area and be represented by one member of parliament. As you know, the proposed boundary changes would divide Coortle Lakes into two different writings, one being Haliburton, Oxbridge, and the other being Coortle Lakes, Coburg. Members of council have concerns about these proposed changes, which I'll share with you now. An initial concern from council is that splitting the writing and combining it with larger communities will marginalize opportunities to affect policy and change. For example, council will have to interact with two members of parliament if the proposed boundary changes are limited. This would especially create challenges for issues affecting the entire municipality in terms of council needing to gain the attention of both members of parliament, who would then have to divide their time between the city and other larger communities in the writings. Also, having two members of parliament would duplicate efforts, and it may not always be possible for members of parliament to meet with members of our city council or city staff at the same time. A second concern is that members of the public have expressed concerns members of council have both the implementation of the proposed boundary changes and its impact on programs being delivered by a senior levels of government. For example, questions about social services programs and the administration of gas tax revenues have arisen. Regarding social services, as you know, the city of Coortle Lakes currently acts as the consulted municipal service manager for the county of Haliburton. Therefore, the proposed boundary changes, as they are now, could pose difficulties for social services programs, as provincial government boundaries typically mirror federal government boundaries. There was also a concern that issues common to the city of Coortle Lakes will differ from those of surrounding areas located within the proposed boundaries. For example, council has adopted four strategic priorities for two thousand and twelve through to two thousand and sixteen. These are as follows: enhancing tourism, managing aggregates, developing a knowledge-based economy with a focus on the water and agricultural sectors for job creation, and creating connections with a focus on infrastructure, communications, and relationships. These priorities are going to guide the work of council and staff in coming years, but they might not necessarily match the priorities of other communities in the proposed boundaries. Therefore, members of parliament might be asked to support conflicting initiatives from different municipalities within the same writing. This could create divisions between municipalities in the same writing and impact the decision-making of senior levels of government. Another concern is that communities surrounding Coortle Lakes in the proposed boundaries are larger centres. As you know, examples of these are Coburg and Port Hope to the south, and Oxbridge to the north. So for these reasons, that council respectfully requests that any federal election boundary changes maintain the entire current municipal area of the city of Coortle Lakes and be represented by one member of parliament. And I'd like to note as well that council's request aligns with the role of this commission. As you know, your role is to propose a new electoral map based on criteria such as average population numbers, communities of identity and interest, historical patterns, and geographic size. In terms of communities of interest and identity, the city of Coortle Lakes does not necessarily share common interests with Coburg, Port Hope, or Oxbridge. The city is probably rural and agriculturally based in nature, while these three other communities are more urban and densely populated. Furthermore, regarding historical patterns, the city of Doggenhead in two thousand and one, which combined seventeen predecessor municipalities, sixteen of these were lower tiers, and the results of the county of Victoria, that all came together. And the city has worked very hard over the past twelve years to bring its citizens focused in on a common identity, and electoral split has the potential to bring back the divide, which will not support council's strategic priorities. Finally, considering geographic size and average population numbers, the city is approximately three thousand sixty-seven kilometers in size with a population of seventy-five thousand five hundred and sixty-five. This is a significant amount of territory and population, and one electoral boundary would benefit the interests of council and the community. And with that being said, on behalf of the council for the city of Coortle Lakes, I would like to thank you for your opportunity to present this justification.
Bill McGee?
Good afternoon. And thank you very much for this opportunity. This is going to be very short, because I agree with ninety-eight percent of what I've heard today, so the points are made, you don't need to hear them again. You commission, and you all work together, make a decision that's right for all. One point I would like to make, and has been said today in part of it, is that I am from the area that was known as Victoria County, and you don't want to know the name I now call it, but in the meantime, the amalgamation in that area has completely divided our communities. We have communities now that do not feel like they're even represented anywhere. And so to further divide us now and change to two MPs and two MPs, as far as I'm concerned, there's many people have no faith in our local government, and certainly would have no faith in either the other level of government if this were to continue to happen to those people in that area. This has been devastated by the amalgamation, and some would suggest that it's coming together now. And I suggest to you, they haven't done their homework, because it's not coming together at all. Thank you.
William Holmes?
I've just been shorted. I'm from Victoria County, which it used to be for a hundred and fifty-two years since it changed it, and I have no problem being split up. I don't know what the other communities, they have their own problems. But our problem is, is we can't get new representation to help us up. And if we get two more in there, we might be able to get four in the board together to get us sort of a mess up in the writing. Thank you very much.
Mark Coombs?
Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission, I'm Mark Coombs, Mayor of Cramby Township, one of the lower-tier municipalities comprised of Northumberland County. I'm here on behalf of our municipal council to voice our concerns regarding the proposed electoral boundary realignment. I would like to thank you for taking on the daunting task of electoral redistribution. Certainly, the huge influx of new people onto the GTA, GTA area is driving much of the need for readjustment of boundaries and creation of new electoral districts, and that is understandable. However, we see little need for radical readjustment in the areas outside the GTA area that are growing considerably less. Cramby Township is now part of the electoral districts that have been termed as Quinney West, and under the proposed new alignment, it would belong to a new district called Prince Edward Quinney West. At just over six thousand population, we would be the smallest municipality in this new district, and almost the furthest west. We are also the smallest municipality in our current district, but at least are located somewhat centrally in the district along the four oh one corridor, and I believe benefit rate it from that location. I understand that the main criteria for electoral boundary is population equality. I also understand that the commission has taken into account communities of interest or identity, historical patterns of previous electoral boundaries, and keeping districts at a manageable geographic size. I agree, both supporting communities of interest or identity and having respect for historical precedents is important. I would draw the commission's attention to the fact that Cramby Township has been part of the electoral district in Northumberland in the main for all of its existence since Confederation, save for ten years between nineteen sixty-six to nineteen seventy-six. Cramby began in eighteen sixty-seven as part of East Northumberland, and is proud to claim as one of our own Joseph Huiler as the first member of parliament for that writing. In nineteen fourteen, east and western Northumberland merged into one writing, Northumberland, and we remained that way until nineteen sixty-six. In nineteen sixty-seven, the writing was split into Northumberland Durham and Prince Edward Hastings, with Cramby becoming part of the latter. However, in nineteen seventy-six, we reunited back into Northumberland as we are now, adding Quinney West to the writing in two thousand and three. And we draw the commission's attention to this history, because we feel deeply that it is part of who we are, is the community to whom we belong. Economically, geographically, and historically, Cramby is and has been always a part of North umberland. And while under the new proposed realignment, we would still belong to Northumberland County and municipal area, our federal, and then most likely our provincial identity would be lost. Prince Edward Quinney West doesn't reflect who we are. We are neither Prince Edward nor Quinney West. We wish to remain a part of Northumberland within a federal identity that reflects that. I wish to thank the members of the commission for their attention, and wish them luck in their endeavor ahead of them. Thank you.
I actually need some?
That's me, and I'm in no present feeling to me.
Okay, thank you. Lou Rinaldi?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for allowing us some time to address you today and serve in the position. My name is Lou Rinaldi, part of the municipal council for twelve years, and part of provincial office, and MP for eight years, and here in the afternoon for Quinney West Position Liberal Association. One of the benefits, I mean, somewhere down the list here, I can just basically say ditto, too much has been said, and we're very to keep Northumberland County intact, and I won't repeat that. Back in October first, we did submit, written submission to you, which really decks up the Northumberland Prime Regent, a submission that the warden brought forward. I just want to comment that rural representation is some of the definitely presentated, the representations you heard from the previous speakers, and certainly it provides some challenges. So after submitting that, the support to Northumberland County with their submission, we went back to sort of drawing boards and tried to understand some of the challenges you faced with the issue of Rob Peter to paint Paul, somewhere along the lines of that. So on page two, I'll make a very brief, along with the theme of keeping Northumberland County intact in one writing, further reviewing your exceptional overall approach in the other, and the representation, rural representation, average size of a hundred and six thousand plus or minus twenty-five percent, I'll propose two other options for your consideration. Option one is status quo, Northumberland Quinney West, given a population of roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I say this, I also spoke to Mayor Williams, the mayor of Quinney West, and I know the preference going to form the writing of Quinney, and I certainly appreciate that, and it makes a lot of sense. Failing to do that, they're quite happy to stay where they are. And option number two, if Quinney West should go, and given the challenges we face from enables from taking chunks away, I'll suggest to you that the county of Northumberland will live on its own with just over eight thousand, which still falls within that criteria of plus or minus twenty-five, twenty-five percent. Based on population growth patterns, that the average population growth will approximate one percent of its average between Northumberland and Quinney West, these targets could be maintained within your realm, overall realm, for the next ten to fifteen years. Based on the provincial growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, these published numbers concur with the growth plan. I speak with some authority or knowledge, house part of the government, permission to assist the Mr. Infrastructure Command, Greater Golden Horseshoe Plan is in place, and a number is done. The writing, I believe, federal member MP Murlock did suggest that the writing could be served as its handful, I believe it is. I remember in two thousand and seven, portion of city, or all of City Township, which is part of Quinney West, was added to the writing, and I can tell you the challenges of my first term in two thousand and three and two thousand and seven, when a chunk of Quinney West, and that was on one municipality, was not part of the electoral writing that I represented. And it did create some challenges. Not unsur but, you know, not too modulable, I will say, we didn't manage, but yet it does create some challenges. So I would encourage you to certainly keep Northumberland County intact. I know it's a daunting task, and I certainly don't envy you, but knowing it is a rural writing, I believe if you can live within those, your restrictions under informal representation, it's doable. So thank you very much.
Colin Griffiths?
Well, members of the commission, members of the public here this afternoon, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you. I too feel I should be able to say ditto to many of the things that we've said before. I would like, however, to address some of the same issues, on the grounds that if I were to stand up here to say I agree with these boundaries, I would not want you to take that into account. The emphasis is very clearly that so far, nobody has spoken in favor of the writing dispute that's been raised in County. However, I represent myself more than anything else. I am a member of the Green Parties of both Canada and Ontario, and have been active politically in that context, but the thoughts I'm presenting have been shared, and while they've been shared in members of both Green Parties in our distant writings, they are in no way endorsed by what I am, by my correspondence. I want to say, the outset, slide number two, please, that I'm a relatively new resident in this writing. I moved from Ottawa to Brighton in two thousand and seven, thus I have no firsthand knowledge of writing geography in the area prior to that. But I take advantage of the services available throughout, a day's drive from my home. We shop locally, and in Coburg, and in Trenton, at opposite ends of NQW. We shop further afield as well, in Belville, Hanksden, Ajax, Petera, as well as Toronto. I don't consider ourselves constrained by political boundaries. Next, please. But basically, referring to the point that many have said, I don't think, I would like to retain the name of Northumberland in our writing there. The Green Party has found it particularly hard to find party members in Trenton, as well as in Prince Edward County. Most of our activity and members in Northumberland Quinney West come from the western end of the writing. From a purely selfish point of view, aligning with the county will make our life more difficult. But as I said, that's being selfish. From a social perspective, my judgment is that residents of Brighton do not consider themselves residents of Prince Edward County. Clearly, there's a line, that they are not us. There's a dividing line between residents of the county and those of Northumberland. Including Brighton and parts further west, as part of the county, to me, does not make There are those I know who disagree with me, less likely. There's even a move towards the local council strategy to incorporate Brighton with communities to the east, but I do not share that view. We came to Brighton to live in Brighton, we came to Northumberland to live in North umberland, not to be part of a larger Trenton and Quinney city. I'm clearly, therefore, against a writing redistribution that includes Brighton in with areas to the east. It's also to be pointed out that the alignment of the western parts of Northumberland County with communities further to the west will draw those parts of our county into a closer big-city alignment, and we recognize a great association with the conurbation of Toronto to the west. That further, in my view, belittles the interests of Northumberland as a whole. It is largely rural. In my experience, a delightful rural environment, beauty not found elsewhere in the province. Its beauty is not only in its farmland, in its hillside, and in the communities found within it. Without doubt, those communities-- But the thoughts I'm presenting have been shared, and while they've been shared with members of both Green Parties in our distant writings, they are in no way endorsed by what I, by my correspondence. How I understand the outset, slide number two please, that I'm a relatively new resident in this writing. I moved from Ottawa to Brighton in 2007, thus have no firsthand knowledge of writing geography in the area prior to that. But I take advantage of the services available throughout, days drive from my home. We shot locally and in Coburg and in Trenton at opposite ends of NQW. We shot further afield as well in Belleville, Hinson, ATX, Peterborough as well as Toronto. I don't consider ourselves constrained by the political boundaries. Next please. But basically reiterating the point that many have said, I don't think, I would like to retain the name of Northumberland in our writing there. The Green Party has found it particularly hard to find party members in Trenton as well as in Prince Edward County. Most of our activity and members in Northumberland Quinney West come from the western end of the writing. From a purely selfish point of view, aligning with the county will make our life more difficult. But as I said, that's being selfish. From a social perspective, my judgment is that residents of Brighton do not consider themselves residents of Prince Edward County. Clearly the sooner, but they are not us. There's a dividing line between residents of the county and those of Northumberland. Including Brighton and parts further west as part of the county, to me does not make There are those I know who disagree with me. Next slide please. There's even a move to all of the local council structures to incorporate Brighton as communities to the east, but I do not share that view. We came to Brighton to live in Brighton, we came to Northumberland to live in North umberland, not to be part of a larger Trenton Quinney city. I'm clearly therefore against a writing redistribution that includes Brighton in with areas to the east. So also be pointed out in the alignment of the western parts of Northumberland County with communities further to the west, will draw those parts of our county into a closer big city alignment. And we recognize a great association with the conurbation of Toronto to the west. That further, in my view, belittles the interests of Northumberland as a whole. It is largely rural. In my experience, a delightful rural environment of beauty not found elsewhere in the province. Beauty is not only in its farm under this hillside, but in the communities found within it. Without doubt, those communities benefit from the surrounding economies, but nevertheless have carried to the will, given a continued existence of Northumberland as a political entity, be diminished in a split representation. Next please. I recognize that this is an enormous jigsaw puzzle. You need to adjust boundaries as far as possible, reduce writings about the same size. You may need to recognize historical associations as well as contemporary alignments. Historically, there was substantial north-south interaction through this area as the lumber of the hinterland was shipped out through the lake shore ports. There was immigration from the county, yes, from the county into regions further inland. More recently, there's been the east-west association as the railways and the road systems were built. NQW is today split by telephone area codes. But none of this history and geography is part of your proposal, and I do agree with that. I do not see this history or the geography as polarizing influences in our communities that should be reflected in our writing boundaries. Next please. In our case, if you can keep Northumberland County intact, you will earn, I know, my gratitude and that of many other states there. In particular, recognizing that NQW is currently about 17% over the desired size, I'd urge you to consider allocating those parts of Quinney West currently in NQW and those parts north and east of Trent River to a more eastern writing, or recognizing that that splits Trent Falls. If necessary, reduce those parts of Gawada now allocated to KPHC in order to accommodate the retention of all parts of Northumberland in a single writing. And I would endorse some of the comments I heard here today for the first time, that the town to go Otanavi, Otanavi and, Otanavi and the other one, that be added to, sorry? No, not Cavan, not, not, just north of Sowaswaring. South Monaghan, Otanavi, that's not an idea that occurred to me, I like that. Last line, and thank you very much. I wish you wisdom and patience, considering the merits of all of our submissions.
Thank you.
I represent the Northumberland Quinney West MPP Writing Association, of which I'm the president. I've also been a candidate in this writing February four times. And I'm going to try and keep it very simple. I handed you a two pager. Most, everything's been said already, but I just want to reiterate a couple of quick things. If you look at the summary table that I provided in handout, so I crunched the numbers, I like doing that because I'm an accountant as well. And the numbers in terms of the current districts and then your quota recommendation of 106,231. And I've provided some solutions in terms of the recommendation using a new writing called Northumberland Pine Ridge, but keeping Northumberland County intact as is for all the reasons that the people before me have said. And the other possibility, because we're looking at the neighboring writing on the east, the Belleville Quinney West, Prince Edward County writing. So that is a suggestion to put Belleville, Quinney West and the county together, and that will result in a writing of 117,798 to 211 statistics. The last thing that I just want to say briefly, and Will Day from Federal Canada brought it up, in the past elections in this community and all the old candidates meetings that I've been to over all these four elections, proportional representation comes up every single time. And it's something that people are very curious about and I think want to investigate. I know it's not the jurisdiction of this commission, but it would be nice if you could mention it. Thank you very much.
I do not have a written submission. I thank the commission for allowing me to speak today and out of gratitude that I will be greeted. I'm currently a City Peterborough resident and a former county resident of County South Monaghan, a former provincial and federal M P candidate, and I speak only on behalf of the Peterborough M P Writing Association, but myself as a citizen. Prior to 1997, our current boundaries were established for the writing Peterborough as a approximately 60% urban, 40% rural population, a wonderful mix. Some of the positives of that matching of the federal and provincial boundaries are that we have a common identity. We have one MP, one MPP, which can serve a common writing, which can, but not necessarily lead to coordination of efforts for the benefits of our citizens. It also matches for the most part the boundaries of our county. Population of this writing has not significantly changed and is not anticipated to change in the near future, as you heard before, as well within the urban population guidelines. As a community activist and possible future candidate for the M P, on most Saturday mornings, I'm usually at the Peterborough Farmers Market with some sort of a petition, current one, one which is asking our governments to protect our public health care. While filling out their information, I often ask these citizens their opinion on the proposal to maintain the current Peterborough writing boundary. The overwhelming answer to this totally unscientific straddle is one of support, and I respectfully and unequivocally voice my, add my voice to that support. Thank you.
There are definitely disadvantages being so far down the list. And as such, I'm going to very, wander away from what I've written down from you. I represent, my name is Paul Burnham, I along with R D Dorland, I represent the Northumberland Federation of Agriculture. I'm the past president and R D is the current president. As you can guess by the name, we represent the worst 700 farm families in the historic region known as Northumberland County. We agree with most of what's been said up here. Northumberland is the strong community of interest. But one thing I would like to say is a little bit different, is farmers across the county and across the town represent less than 2% of farming population. So a great deal of what influence we have with the government is to lobby. And should Northumberland be split, as you propose, we will be faced with lobbying two, oh, four, when you conclude the two, two federal and the two provincial representatives. And we are a volunteer group, and there are a number of Northumberland groups. There's a number of Northumberland No Producers, Northumberland Cavemen's Association, North umberland Poor Producers, Northumberland Crop Improvement Association, Northumberland 4H, and this goes on. So as you can see, the volunteers that are in these organizations do meet very rarely with MPs and MPPs and should be, I don't know how we can accommodate all the different MPs and MPPs that we'll have to deal with. The other thing I'd like to say is that we are strong supporters of Northumberland County as a municipality. We've worked many years trying to get a good relationship and in recent years, the county has recognized agriculture and has recently completed a business retention and expansion study, which polled hundreds of agriculture related businesses to find out future needs in this industry. A lot of the money for this study came from the provincial government and federal governments and the studies we can have as a landmark study in Ontario. Should, if we had been split, as you propose, I'm not sure how that money could have come and that study probably wouldn't have been done. The other thing that they've done for us is granted Northumberland County and as farmers, we now, a lot of us, have these signs outside our properties. This one says, this is a proudly Northumberland farm. And many, many farmers in the county are strong Northumberland supporters and we really wish that you keep Northumberland together, to go along with the county, with the work with the order of the county and some of his suggestions as to how to accommodate this. Thank you very much.
That completes the list of people who registered with the commission, secretary expressing a desire to present this submission to the commission. Is there anyone in the room who has not registered with the secretary who wishes to address this? A certain forward to state your name, please.
My name is Jimmy Fell, I'm councillor in Ayr and Alderman. Lived in Northumberland County here for 10 years now, born in Northumberland County in England. I consider myself to be very fortunate to have lived in both of them because they're both beautiful places. I just like to reiterate with regards to keeping the county whole, we don't have havens wall or the castles or things that they have in Northumberland in England, but as North umberland, we do have a very distinct identity. And I think everyone who lives in Northumberland wants to retain and certainly cherishes that identity. That's all I have to say, but it is history now. I was back in England two years ago and promoted Northumberland as a county for, as a tourist resort to the people I met in Northumberland in England, and response was quite, very good actually, it's just my little bit. We have potential, historically, we have a topography and everything. Whether it was a mistake or by purpose, the county here and the county in England will vary soon. Thank you.
I also wish to address the commission.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Isabel Hyde, I'm the deputy mayor of County Township.
Isabel, your last name, please.
Isabel. And I'm here to keep Northumberland together. Thank you.
Well, that was it. Sorry?
My name is Jamie Schmell, I'm the executive assistant with Barry Holden, he's a member of parliament for Halliburton Port Lakes Rock.
So it's about your surname, please.
Okay, Schmell, S-C-H, M-A-L-E. I know this was a very complicated process and I can imagine there's different variables on your, on your table as you drew up the boundaries. One of the things that we've been hearing in our writing is, and it was made in the presentation earlier today, is that Court Lakes, however it may end up in final draft, hopefully will be in one writing. I know council is adamant that their wishes be brought forward, so if that could happen, that would be appreciated. And the second one is from hearing from a lot of people here in Northumberland, that if the writing boundaries do stay, stay the same as proposed, that the name Northumberland be included, whether it's Court Lakes, Northumberland, or however that might, might end up. Thank you.
My life is a weird, thanks to the commission. Your honor pointed out earlier that it was not your fault that we had a compressed time frame for this exercise. I just wanted to point out that some people in this room know and some do not, that the commission is entitled to be eventuated for what you've been starting to do, which is to formulate revised proposals on the road and advertise new hearings to consider revised proposals, most easily Hamilton, Holden, Waterloo, Wellington area. I don't know a commission that has done this before as a way of responding to the compressed time frame that the government or parliament has imposed on you. I haven't seen this done before and I think it's an amazing, amazingly good thing, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, this concludes the hearing this afternoon. We cannot promise to anyone who made submissions that we will make the changes requested. We can promise that we will give each and every submission very close and serious consideration. And before adjournment, I simply wish to tell the people of Northumberland that this is by far the most highly attended public hearing we've had, so it would be great. This is quite a unique process. It's probably one of the most significant things one can involve themselves in in a democratic society. So congratulations to you for taking the time to give us the benefit of your wisdom. We thank you very much.